Good morning. I'm David Plausis. I'm the Opinion Engagement Editor for The Tennessean, and we have the pleasure of having Tom Druffel, candidate for District Nine Nashville School Board, here with us, my colleague Frank Daniels, Metro columnist. We'll be asking him some questions about why he's running for office and also get deeply into some school board policy. So first of all, thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate having you here.
Well, it's great to be here and talk about my favorite subject, so it's good.
Well, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for office.
Well, I'm hotel general manager by trade. Been in the hotel business for 43-plus years. During that time, I've gotten to know some of my staff, and as some of my staff had needs along the way, I got to know that education was one of their biggest needs and biggest opportunities to grow. So got involved in education as a volunteer over the years, and it's been a part of my passion ever since.
And specifically, in terms of making the decision to run for school board, because obviously this is a huge commitment, and it obviously looks at many local and also state and national policies as well, why specifically the school board?
Well, and at this time, I don't believe we've delivered on our promises to our students and to our parents. We have 86,000 kids at risk. Only 14% are college-ready as deemed by ACT, and that's heading in the wrong direction. We need to be doing more. There's a personal note to this. If you look at just purely where we were designed to go, I looked at the 1314 strategic plan, and we're only halfway to where we said we would be in ready in terms of the ACT scores and having people college-ready. So I think we're just way behind, and we're not heading in the right direction. This translates into some serious needs, and the sad part of this is this is one of our top issues that, as a volunteer, we said, okay, we're going to get people college-ready. For the last six to 10 years, that's all we talked about is one of our top priorities is to get kids to college-ready, and we're failing. So I saw this as a big need. A second component of that is, I was talking to a mother of four the other day, and she looked right in the eyes and said, "Mr. Druffel, this is for 10 minutes." She said, "I can't wait for you guys to fix this school system. I need it now." And I looked at her, listened to her for 10 minutes, and there was serious anger in her eyes and her voice. And she said, "I'm going to support you, but I need you to fix this." We need to get angry. We spent half our budget in the school system, and we're not getting the results we need. That's unacceptable. In business, we'd go out of business. We can't afford to do this to the 86,000 students we have, and we've got to make a difference. So in my mind, we have to take a much more serious effort of making a bigger vision and accomplishing more in our education.
And what is your vision for the role of a school board member? How do you think you would play it? How do you envision it being? How do you envision working with other school board members?
I call it unified focus, and I'm going to back into those two terms. First of all, focus. One of the things, there's a book called Four Degrees of Execution, and it's by Covey. And in this book, it talks about when you set too many goals, you can't accomplish them. But if you set one or two specific goals that leverage all the other, the impact of everything else, you can accomplish it. It's called a wildly important goal, which is a wig, for better terms. I think we need to establish a wig for having the best teaching corps in the country, by all means. That has the best leverage point of anything you could possibly do to have an impact on the student. Every reading that I showed or had showed that the teacher has the biggest impact. And yet, we have significant teacher turnover year after year after year. If you go back to even teacher surveys years ago, it should have told us, we're going to have problems. I sat down with probably 20-plus teachers in the last few weeks, and I asked, "What is the issue? Do you want to stay around, or what do you like about your job?" Many of them were looking for other opportunities. We need to fix that, whether it's discipline, testing, professional development. We need to be able to get to the teachers and have that impact.
Do they tell you why, or specifically why they're looking for other opportunities?
It's a combination of those, and if you see our turnover rate, it's significant, 16% on average, but some of them are higher numbers. They get frustrated with the discipline issues, that there's a matrix now for discipline. And so who knows better than to take care of the student but the teacher and the principal? Their hands are handcuffed. They can't make those decisions. There's a matrix that tells them what they can do and can't do. Another example is professional development. One of the teachers, or several of the teachers, said, "Gosh, all of us English teachers got together at the beginning of the year for professional development. We met entire together, and we discussed, we became friends, and we discussed the issues, and we came up with good ideas." They took that away. Those are the kind of things, you know, when you have someone out there, you know, fighting the battle with you, it's pretty cool. But when you're doing this and you have these things taken away from you, it makes a big difference. I think a third component is pay. A teacher's paid the exact same amount for eight years. That's crazy when you think about it, eight years, unless you get a master's or PhD. So within that eight years, your costs go up and everything else goes up. Now, a teacher gave me the perfect example. By all means, a PhD or a master's has an impact, but maybe not as much as a good teacher. I mean, a good teacher actually comes from, you know, professional development and having the desire and vision of what they want to do. But a teacher told me this. She was in her fifth year of teaching, and so here she is in the fifth year of teaching. She got someone with a master's that came in as first-year teacher. She had to teach that person how to teach. Now, it's just part of orientation and part of onboarding, but the reality is, here you've got a person that gets paid less and has to teach the other person to teach. A master's and PhD add value, but does it add value to be the best teacher? And I would suggest there's better ways to take a look at the funding. Our teachers deserve a ton of money for what they do. And in my vision, a teaching corps that is considered one of the best in the country would drive our education to the level we need to. And to me, that is going back to leverage, absolutely leverage that point as your most important point, my wildly important goal, and take it from there. Then you've got to say, okay, how do we get the local teachers to want to stay here? How do we get the best teachers? You know, some of the survey says it's pay, but a lot of it is personal. You know, they love their jobs, but it's also, you know, sort of personal satisfaction. And we've got to create that personal satisfaction that's sort of gone away from some of these issues that we've talked about.
So there's a complex problem.
Correct.
The school board has limited authority in their governance model. What actions, what activities do you think a school member can bring to bear to make a difference in changing the trajectory towards fulfilling the goals for college readiness?
It's got to be built into the strategic plan, by all means. We have three ways to govern, as I understand, strategic plan, budget, and interaction with Dr. Joseph. So we have those three ways. We can do it. We build in a strategic plan that says, "This is what we will do." It will be part of his evaluation, part of his direction. And going back to my unified component, as a school board, we need to unify against one message. If we bear all the resources against what we want to have happen, we can get it to happen. We've got a city that's called the It City. I mean, this is crazy. I'm in the hotel business, and we see it. Everybody loves us. We have so many--
Until they go to pay the bill.
Yeah. Well, that's right. It's getting worse. But, you know, if you take all the resources we have with the incredible institutions, Vanderbilt, I mean, Belmont, all these institutions, you take all the creativity that we have, and you take the focus that is not only as a board, but as a community, we focus together. I cannot imagine we cannot build the best education in the city. I absolutely believe we can. And the school board is the place to start with. We have to build that vision. It's got to be bigger than we have. We can't look at incremental gains. You know, I'm not doing this to get another 5%. I'm doing this to make a significant difference. Otherwise, I wouldn't even be here. I mean, if we don't make a difference, then we're taking this mother that says, "I need it now, and I need better education," and we're just saying, "It's hopeless." We've got to create hope in our school, parents, and our kids.
So when you think about a strategic plan and where to drive a strategic plan, do you have a model of another school district or another place where you've seen the kind of activity or the kind of results that you would like to see, or is this--
I think you've got a--
--more amorphous.
You know, if you look around the country, and I did some homework along the way and said, "Where do you go to find the best model?" I'm not sure there's a lot of perfect models out there. I would take, I think it's going to have to be incredibly strong dialogue as to how this looks. But we have to invest, and I think, as we looked at the academies of Nashville, which I've been a part for 10 years, and you look at it, there was models out there, but we made it better. Okay? We have to find those models, but we have to make it much better than that is. And then it goes back to, again, building that teacher corps, because if the teacher can increase grade level, a good teacher in two years, and a bad teacher lose grade level in two years, I mean, what an incredible person has an impact. And that's where we need to be, is go after probably different models of who does a great job with their teachers. I want people to not only want it from Tennessee, but I want to hear it in California and go, "God, I've got to go to Nashville because I want to be a teacher there." Once we get that, we're going to win the game, in my opinion.
So you've been involved, you said, for 10 years or more in the various aspects of what's been happening in the metro school system. And in that 10 years, we've made little, if any, progress towards the kinds of strategic goals you're talking about.
You're right.
What do you think is the problem, from your perspective, from that engagement? And what is the one thing that you would change based on that experience?
Yeah. So, yes, 10 years almost to the day, I've been involved with, when we sat around a table, six business leaders, including myself, and looked at, said, "What do we want a model high school to look like?" And this is even before Dr. Register got in. Star Herman headed us up, Jeff Yarborough, a lot of people. We all sat around a table, mayor dean's office, and we just brainstormed. And we came up with the academy model because it gave some glue and gave experiential learning to what people are learning. So people at risk, people that are learning their math and English, sort of gain a greater purpose. So absolutely, I think there was a lot of great things with the academy approach. Where I think we need to go a little different is that it increased graduation rates because we kept people in school. And that was a great thing. I mean, we got people to stay because they kept a greater interest, and we, 350 business leaders and professional leaders now are working with these kids. So, you know, just the role modeling created a much better opportunity for the kids to see a need to stay. What it didn't do is, it didn't improve the academic performance of all the people coming into high school. So just because we created a better glue once they got there doesn't mean that as they moved up through the system that they were prepared for high school. So, you know, as much as I think we have an incredible model, although I do think there's some things that need to be changed on it, the kids that are going, they need to be fixed at pre-K. I mean, we need them to be able to read and math, you know, and we're looking bad there because in fourth grade, we're not at grade level, and we're going downwards on English and math. Only 36% of the kids are on grade level. So now, we're getting kids that are going to move up, and they're still not going to make it. So in my mind, we have to fix it before they get there. I do think, once they get there, they see the greater purpose. Does that make sense?
Sure. Well, my question, in listening to you, is that as you're looking at this, the business community saw an opportunity with the academies of Nashville where they could get involved and make a difference. But as you look earlier on in the stream, is there less opportunity for businesses, and who is the person that, or what is the group that can step in and create an equivalent lever for change?
Well, I did it through the Pencil Foundation, and so, and then, of course, the Chamber was involved, which it's a very strong passion of the Chamber to build education. So I think that both of those are excellent ways to then move the system and support mechanism down to these schools. When you think of the level of support that's ready to jump in, it's amazing. When I started, I was the first partnership chair for the academies for the hospitality, and we had five high schools. And at the same time, I was chair of the Education Committee for the Hotel Association. So I had already a working group that said, "Hey, we want to do something." When I mentioned what we could do, I had 15 volunteers the minute I mentioned it. They all want to see the education system improve, and they're willing to invest their time. We now have over 30 hospitality partners, you know, Gaylord, Marriott, Hilton, Holiday Inn, all willing to jump in. I believe we're all willing to jump in at every level to make it work. And I think there's a community out there that just, and Nashville's an incredible community. We have a community out there now ready to jump in, to do anything it takes with direction and with some, you know, more focus as to what it will do to make it succeed. Makes sense?
You'd mentioned the funding issue, and obviously, schools are 41% of the budget of Metro Nashville government. But going to the BEP issue, to the Basic Education Program, the school board decided last week to vote to sue the state for adequate funding. What is your position on that? Do you think you would have voted in favor or against it, and how did you see the vote?
I'm not sure how you would have voted, but I'm not a big fan. First of all, I do think we're underfunded. The funding formula is old, and it is, we need more money to support our schools, by all means. But I'm not sure, setting up, you know, Dr. Joseph in a position where all of a sudden he has to be in a lawsuit, we have a new mayor, you know, my gosh, why not let them start to work it out with the state first? It seems like you're putting them in a tough position when you've got a couple new people that are pretty good, and they look like they would be able to solve some problems. I think we made a big, you know, I don't think that was a good decision to get into a lawsuit at this time. Even though we're underfunded, I think I would allow some work done by, you know, Mayor Berry and, you know, Dr. Joseph to really take the lead on this. After a period of time, maybe you do something. And generally, lawsuits aren't a great policy. I mean, that just, usually, it gets, you know, it doesn't get to where you want to go all the time. So I think, I can't say I would have voted against, but it didn't make sense to me without allowing some new players to work it out with the state.
One funding issue that's been discussed quite a bit has been the English language learners issue, which is the impetus for this vote. How would you approach, or how would you recommend approaching the issue of increasing or leveling English language learner funds, and what kind of vision might you bring to it in terms of addressing this growing population of this school system?
And to me, this is, as I've sort of, you do some reading, and you do some analysis, and you think, wow, this is, whether it's low-hanging fruit, but this is an opportunity that we really have a significant chance to make a difference. As I read, 20% to 25% of our student population's ELL. And so, when you look at it, it's a big number. And yet, it takes five to seven years for them to become language proficient. So I'm thinking I'm in a different country, and I'm trying to figure out what's the language, and then I'm trying to figure out chemistry, math, and science. I'm sorry, but I'm struggling with that. To me, I would focus very heavily on getting the ELL learners to become proficient much quicker. If we can get them into one, two years, then their rest of the years are productive. So not only does it affect the learners, it affects everybody in that classroom because now the teachers have to look and work against learners that don't understand it. So you really, if you take 20% of that classroom, 20% of that classroom is struggling with even understanding what you're talking about. So to me, you focus, you put a lot of your money on getting them to learn the English language quickly, one to two years, so then the rest of their years become productive. And I would suppose a lot of them fall out as, I don't have any stats, but I can't imagine that you can continue to go and not understand all the other classes. Even math, it requires a fair amount of English. So that's how I would handle it.
Now, you've mentioned the issues of teacher retention, graduation rate, and reading level as top concerns. Would you consider those your top three challenges for MMPS? And maybe, if you could clarify that, and also talk about what you think the opportunities are to improve?
Teacher retention and teacher development, talent identification, to me, is number one. Again, goes back to, if you've got a good teacher, the rest of the formula becomes easier to work around. And so, it's teacher development. And if you look at the strategic plan, it was four years ago, and guess what? We haven't, we failed. We haven't succeeded anyplace along the way in terms of improving teacher talent and development. And the teachers I know are incredible teachers. I mean, these people love their job despite working 14, 16 hours. They want to do what they want to do, but they can get frustrated. So I would absolutely go to teaching as my top priority, by all means. Reading is such a critical factor because everything surrounds reading. And I'm a big fan of pre-K. If you can't get our children to read, again, as I remember like the ELL situation, they can't do anything else. And so they're going to be behind and fail along the way. So you've got to look at your critical success factors that support the long-term development growth of our student. And it's got to be reading and writing, teachers, which are the two most impactful parts. Does that answer your question?
It does. And in terms of opportunities, looking ahead, I know The Tennessean has reported a little bit about the fact that the school district, for a time, had not been tracking why teachers were leaving and so forth.
That's right.
Are there things that you think that you might recommend, if elected to the school board, to address that issue of teaching?
Well, I find it ironic that, and I know you reported a couple, which is very well done. To me, that if we knew that four, six years ago, teachers were, if you go back five or six years ago in the TELP survey, which is the teacher survey, and we were 10 points below the state average, if we didn't know why that was happening, and only now are we looking for a survey to find out why it's happening, we're really missing a management component that's really serious. And from a strategic standpoint on the school board, you've got to be asking the question, "Why don't you know now why your teachers are leaving?" We should not be looking at a survey right now. I mean, that's sort of, if I did that in hotel business, and I had all my staff leaving, and I didn't know by tomorrow or within a week or two, I wouldn't have a staff, or my business would go out. We are way too late. No sense of urgency on determining why our teachers are leaving, just getting to the point where you're creating awareness in a couple articles. But we should have known this a long time ago, and that should have been a significant part of what we expected from our director. The board is accountable for that. And I really feel like we missed the vote a long time ago, and we may have been able to retain a lot of our better teachers if we would have focused on something like that four years ago.
Now, from a businessman's perspective, coming in, you come in in a world where decisions can be made more quickly than they can in the government entity, for example, in bureaucracy. How would you be able to adjust, or should you be adjusting your mindset to address the issues of red tape, the issues of how long it takes to resolve certain issues? What might you bring in to help accelerate some things?
And that's, in a prior life, I've been in hotel business. I used to be a Director of Ops for, operations for, 20, 40 hotels for 10 years. And on several of those occasions, I have a lot of experience on the board and experience in strategic planning. I think I'm going to give you one of my best examples in terms of my ability and my experience. I was asked, Mary Suites had a sister brand, and I was brought into the Director of Ops and to build that brand, and spent $260 million out of Fairfield, New Jersey. And they said, "Tom, you're going to run this brand." And we had four hotels, and we were going to get to 60 hotels in two years. So I get on, and three months on the job, it's exciting. I'm getting things going. And all of a sudden, my general managers are saying, "Well, the CFO said I had to go do this. The Director of Marketing wanted me to do this. The CEO wanted me to do this." So I'm looking at going, I'm a new guy, New Jersey, you know, it was a very aggressive place where the expectations were high. But I went to everybody, and I said, "Guys, you all have your ideas. We talked about them at day one, but it's sort of getting diluted. The message is, it's coming out here. We need to meet together." So I asked for a meeting. The board went, got, the board got to the senior management, and we all met in Dallas, Los Felinas. Never forget it. And I put together a lot of homework, and I put together a message of strategic where we needed to go. Fortunately for me, after two days, I got about 90%. The other 10% I didn't get. But doing the homework, logical planning, my experience is very heavy on strategic planning, and I did that with three different companies, IHG's, Daybridge Suites. So I'm an operator, but I'm also a strategic planner for 10 years that developed a lot of ideas and a fair amount of successes.
How much of the concern that you have that got you engaged in running for the school board is mitigated or makes you excited by having the director that was chosen and brought on board, the new director, Dr. Joseph?
Well, I'm pretty excited about Dr. Joseph for several reasons. One is, if you're a manager, you like urgency. And I have certain urgency in Dr. Joseph. I love, I saw his videos. I was out of town, actually, at a business meeting during some of his interviews. So I went to YouTube, and I saw his video and his talk. And everything I've seen is walk in the talk. I'm really excited. Urgency, he's not waiting for July 1st. That guy is on top of all the ideas, and he's executing areas such as community development. I was at Sylvan Park, a grade school, the other day, and if you looked at, we had 60 to 80 parents there engaged in understanding how we were going to hire the new principal. Pretty cool. I mean, that hadn't happened before. So automatically, before he's even starting, he's getting the community involved. I like the idea that he's, you know, looking at the resources at the central office and asking, "Where do we need to put the resources? Do they need to be at the central office, or do they need to be moved down to the schools?" And, I mean, he's really challenging things quickly. On July 1st, he's going to be running, and I think he's setting himself up. So I'm absolutely excited about the direction, and I think I could be a very good partner in that direction.
So he gave a reading assignment to the current school board, Leadership and Self-Deception. Have you read the book yet?
I have been, I hope to read the book. I've been doing a lot of other stuff right now, like campaigning. But by all means, I love to read, and it will be a hallmark of what I do. There's no doubt I'll read it.
So one of the questions that we've been asking is, what is the one thing that you think that the school system is doing correctly today?
I would say that, in my world of academies, we are doing a lot of good things. Right now, we are a nationally recognized academy. We're bringing in people three times a year from all over the country. I get a chance to meet and talk to them. They are jealous of our high school reform as the academies. There are some things that need to be adjusted with the academies, but by all means, the pathways, the ways that we have set this learning has been fantastic. To have people from New York and LA go, "You got it right." It's pretty exciting. So I would say, we have about 80% or 90% of that right, and it's very well done.
Right. And then, conversely, if you could change one thing today that the school system is doing, what would that be?
Well, going back to the teachers, I would go back in setting a talent director, I know we're going to get a new one, talent director against finding, first of all, the pay. These teachers deserve, I mean, we're giving them an increase. I realize, they deserve more. They're professionals, and they have the biggest impact on our kids' lives. And yet, we treat it like it's incidental to anything else that we do, when it's got to be one of the most important things. I would really focus on the teacher, because until you get the teacher fixed, the rest of this stuff sort of comes sideways. I mean, you can't get them to read if you don't have good teachers. All the other things are around that teacher focus and doing the very best job with them.
So then, to stay on that theme, one of the changes in the budgeting process over the last two years has been moving towards a student-based budgeting system.
Correct.
Do you have a good sense of what that is? Can you talk to us about your understanding and whether you think that's the right way for metro schools to go?
I do, and I think it's been well-received because it's empowered the schools and it's supported the schools based on their needs. And in the past, it was pretty generic. And now, we have actually pretty well-sound funding around needs of a school, whether it's an ELL learner, a person with a disability. Now, they get the resources against that. The other part of the teacher opponent is, of course, empowering the principals at a higher level to make the decisions for those teachers. And this has given them a little leg up to start looking at that a little bit more.
So there's been a lot of discussion over the years about the charter school system, the traditional schools, and so forth. Could you frame, in your perspective, where the argument is today, if there is even an argument anymore in your mind?
There's an argument. This is probably the most interesting thing I've ever seen. I've been spending 10 years as a volunteer, thousands of hours working in the high school system. You know, I've logged hours in the public school system. I'm not sure I walked into a charter school up until a week or two ago. So to me, the solution needs to be our public school system. At the same time, you know, in the hotel business, you look at best practices. You go, "Hey, who's that, what's that guy doing over there that creates success?" And if we don't look at that, why aren't we, you know, why are we making that-- And if we don't look at that, why aren't we, you know, why are we making that such a politically hot button when we should be sharing best information, best practices? And, and we're not doing that. Right now, it's become so politicized that people with, the teachers will tell you, I can't go over there to that charter school because, you know, I think I'll get in trouble. Well, that's just the craziest thing in the world. We're all there as teachers. I think the fix has got to be through the public school system. But my gosh, if we have good opportunities to create schools that are unique in some fashion, we've got to take a look at every opportunity we can to make a difference in the kids' lives. It shouldn't be a political battle about this is better, this, we need to look at the kids' success and figure out what that takes to get that, that child's success.
You've mentioned you'd walked into charter schools just recently. Did you notice a difference between the traditional schools and your charter school experience?
I probably only spent a few minutes in that to meet someone, so I can't, I would probably not speak. I've heard great things about charter schools. I think they've done some really great, great things. The best charter schools by all means are creating successes. And we've got to look at every opportunity for every, every child and not worry about, you know, who's doing what. I think we've got to solve the entire, you know, equation in terms of schools. But by all means, there are some good charter schools and if they have some solutions for us that I go back and look at this mother of four and if that can solve her children's needs, so she doesn't have to tell her children at 18, oh, I'm sorry, but we just didn't get there. That's wrong. It's about the kid. It's not about, you know, this is not as good or it's politically not correct. And, and we've got to fix that. You know, I think Dr. Joseph said, it's all about excellence in schools. I mean, he just, that was his summary comment. And I agree.
So on a gross level, do you think that we have enough charter schools today? Do we need more charter schools? What is your feeling about the mix of seats as some people in this debate call it?
I, I think that's one of those political questions that you say, it'd be nice to say there's not enough or enough or there's too many. I'm not a politician. So my feeling is you make a decision as you go. I don't think I have a number that says 27 is right, 28 is right, could be 35, could be 22. I think you make a decision based on the needs at the time and the place and not try to create yourself, put yourself in a position that says, oh, I'm against charter or I'm pro charter. That's wrong. And you know, as a business person, you go in and make a decision based on needs, performance. And if it works and it makes sense, it's great. And if they answer the equation, good. If they don't, you don't. I, I just think that's become too political where we've got to make good decisions that are common sense at the time and the place. So I don't want to put myself in a position where that says, I'm against charter, pro charter. I'm pro, pro children, get excellent education. I will make good decisions based on that information.
So, but you've pitched us as your expertise and your interest in strategic planning.
Correct.
And I would imagine that in a strategic plan, in terms of thinking about the mix of schools, that it's going to achieve the goal that you want to achieve, which is some number higher than 14% college ready.
Correct.
How would you put that mix of what's the proper ratio of schools in a, in a strategic plan?
In terms of, you're looking at the percentage of children that need to go?
You said you make the decision based on what makes sense at the time, but a strategic plan, of course, is going to be looking years in the future. There would have to be some calculation in your mind of what's the right mix of how you deliver education to achieve your goals of, of increased college readiness by graduates.
Correct. I mean, if we're talking about the college readiness, by all means, in the strategic plan, it has to be, you know, developed at the variables where they're going to affect that. And again, it goes back to teacher. But we've got to look at how we, how we're testing. I think this alludes a little bit to testing and getting our children ready for the ACT or, or testing. You know, are we, are we looking at, and you know, are we looking at, are we supporting getting, for the test, are we supporting the child to actually get ready for the career? And I think those are important questions. I'm not sure I'm answering your question exactly, but...
I'm just asking the question. You're the, you get to choose how you answer it. But I would follow that back up. If our, we've determined what our, our measurement of college readiness is.
Correct.
Do you want to look at which schools deliver against that measurement the best and invest more in those schools? I'm just, I'm thinking about your strategic planning approach. How do you go about determining?
Right.
What's the best way to reach your goal?
Took me a minute, but I got there.
I probably didn't ask it very clear.
So in any data, you got to, you got to dig a little bit more. And you know, like any budget, you know, it's data. It's a number. There's a lot of people behind that number. That's really important. But that statistic tells us only a symptom of the issue. What we have to do is go back and go, okay, is it English? Is it math? Is it analytical skills? What are the pieces that are supporting? Then by school, we need to, you know, then dissect that even further and then find out what are the core issues that we have to address than to go back and get those numbers? Because this, again, is a symptom. I don't have access to those numbers, but being a business guy that does a lot of strategic, it's all about the analysis. If you don't analyze correctly and you then target against that analysis, you're going, you're shooting the gun at the wrong target. And we can't shoot the gun at the wrong target. There's too much at risk. So in my mind, you do a lot of analysis and, and then go against that and then get the teachers, I mean, the teachers and principals tell us pretty closely what we need to do in many cases. The analysis will get us the direction where we need to go.
Let's talk a little bit about the issue, the relationship between the state and also the school district. Certainly you have, you know, much broader view from having managed numerous projects, having worked in New Jersey and so forth. There has to be obviously a firm relationship with the education commissioner and also understanding now how the Every Student Succeeds Act will affect districts like Metro.
Sure.
Where there'll be a lot more local autonomy. Have you given thought to how you envision that relationship moving forward now that the state and local board will have that much more authority, at least on paper?
Yeah, I, I think, I've always worked in partnerships. And, and my aggressive stand in almost every case is get to know your partners really well. They're your long-term partners. We're in this together. Their intention is absolutely, I think, our intention. And that's to have more children succeed in school. So I think there has to be just a greater dialogue directionally of where they expect to go, you know, the funding mechanism, you know, they approved some incremental funding for teachers, et cetera. But we need to have a really good dialogue, I think, with not only our school board, but the school boards around the state that would say, hey, you know, get us on the same page. Where do you think we need to go? But we need a serious dialogue because it's not getting us there. And even though we've made some incremental gains in terms of money toward this, this is just me talking after 40 years of listening about people talking about education. It seems like we keep talking about it, but we don't do anything about it. We'll talk about a little bit incremental money, a little bit incremental gain, a little bit of this and a little of that. I think we've got to have a serious dialogue and say, hey, no, this is, this requires a significant investment in our people. 86,000 in Nashville is a huge investment in kids. And these kids can make doctors or they can be in jail, depending on how we, how we support them. So it's long around, answers your question. But to me, it's, it's even bigger in that we have to really talk about how are we going to fund serious changes to our, to our schools and our teachers for, for our students? And it's got to start at the state level, of course, because, you know, they support and they're a fair amount of our budgeting mechanism. And I think we've got to get engaged. I think they want to see the success, but it may require more than, you know, anybody's willing to, to, to talk about. But I think we have that conversation and say, if we really want this, what's it take? Not start talking about, well, you know, another 10 million will get us this. Well, no, no. If we want full level success and we have a serious strategic plan against that success, then we need to have started that conversation. And so to me, that's where...
How would you approach, because some of your most important partners are going to be your fellow school board members if you're elected. How do you approach those conversations, especially when you have, you might, you'll at least have one new school board member.
Correct.
And, and you have sometimes, you know, the perception that at times, the school board has been a little bit dysfunctional. At times, the school board hasn't always been cooperative or unified. How would you approach those conversations knowing that there's that history, but also knowing to move forward in the future?
Well, that's probably one of the more important parts of what we need to do is, we used to did, always did things in retreats. So when we got together, we brought our agendas together and we did it in a way where, in my case in Dallas, we brought our agendas together and we talked in a closed room. So we had incredibly strong discourse, I can tell you. But at the end of the day, we have to have one message, whether it's to my GMs or whether it's to our teachers, to the director, to the principals, we've got to come around with one message. And if we don't get our way, we've got to be able to agree, okay, I didn't get my way. But the one message has to come across strategically that we all agree where we're going. So in my feeling, and you go back to one of the comments, unified focus. We've got to have that focus. We've got to agree that, that we're unified against that focus. I think I might have the right ideas on focus, but I'm sure that other board members may have other ideas. And if they do, great, let's talk about them. I don't think I have all the answers. Sometimes I do. But most of the time, I think that conversation and a really strong discourse will really make a difference where we, if we come with homework, I found that if you do your homework on not just, here's my comment, here's my idea, but what works? You know, let's study Austin. Let's study some of the school districts that work. And then come together and go, what, why it worked? Let's go to Austin. Let's find out. And then pull together on one message. We've got some smart people on the school board. They just don't always agree and it becomes very difficult to get anything done.
Little shift, less policy, more personal. Can you tell me about the person that you most admire and why?
There's multiples, but probably my wife. And so Margie has passion. She cares. You know, if you ask her to jump, she goes, how high? Loyal. So yeah, absolutely. I mean, my wife is, is my hero in many ways. We've been married 34 years and just absolutely, we are best friends and I can't imagine admiring anybody more than that. And she's the mother of my children and she just, she, she has all the gifts of a good relationship. People love her and a sense of humor. So I admire her the most. And I had thought about that question, but absolutely, she's my favorite person.
And we were talking before this broadcast has started about, about your son and who's been featured before. Tell us a little bit about that, about, about your son and father, yeah?
Yeah, Sean, Sean's an interesting guy. We didn't, I'll try to go through this quick. But so at four and five, he was, he had delays and he's got fragile X, which is intellectual development delay. And we didn't know it. He just had trouble talking when we lived in Atlanta. And all of a sudden, we're finding, you know, he's five years old, six years old and he's still had problems. So we went to Emory, found out that he had fragile X and this is a little, for people with disabilities, it's, it's hard to understand. But in essence, the doctor said he would be institutionalized by 12. And so we're like, I mean, it's like losing a child. And all of a sudden, we're thinking, oh my gosh, what do you do? So our emotional component at that time was significant. We thought we almost like lost a child. Turned out completely wrong. So we did everything we could to take care of Sean, to try to give him the best. What we found in Atlanta at Sweet Apple School is, is they weren't mainstreamed. They lived in a, in a group. And if you know Sean, he's probably the most outgoing person in the world. He hasn't met a stranger. And he was in a group of six autistic kids who didn't want to meet strangers. I mean, they were, they were just locked in. And so his first seven or eight years of school was very rough in terms of, he was the clown of the class, but the reality is he didn't, he didn't fit in.
Nobody to laugh with him.
Nobody to laugh. And if, you know, again, with special needs kids, there was eight kids in his, our neighborhood with the same age and they teased him. There's an emotional issue with that. So only a parent could realize that during that process, we, you know, your heart goes out because it's like, he kept, Dad, I want friends. Well, how do you say that? I mean, how do you create friends when you have someone in that situation? Fast forward to Nashville, he goes to HG Hill, they mainstream. He's starting to really grow as a, as a child and starting to love it and is gaining friends. Goes to Hillwood High School, well, I'm sorry, we go to another school that is JP2 that has a special needs program. And they have a mentorship component to that. And that all of a sudden, and he loves sports. So now he's growing. And, and there's a, the article that shows about Coach Snead, who was from Father Ryan, he was the basketball coach. He mentored Sean. And so Sean comes from this little shell of shy guy and now he's manager of football, basketball, baseball teams. And he's, you know, the most popular guy on campus, talking about a transition. Confidence grows. You know, we would go to events and he would walk down and he loves sports. So if you had orange on Vanderbilt's, he's a Vanderbilt fan. Vanderbilt's going to beat Tennessee this year. So he just blossomed all of a sudden and continues to blossom. Got to go to Vanderbilt and then the next step program and really again continued to blossom in terms of gaining strength, you know, gaining confidence in him. Got a chance to work at Vanderbilt's cafeteria where the athlete, he's been working this last year and he makes money and he's happy and he does, it does a lot of things. So as a parent, the growth has been phenomenal to see from a kid that we thought may have not been, you know, having a chance in life to be something significant. What changed me along the way is, is I got to Nashville, I'm a tennis player and I remember Kathy Hauser, she was the Special Olympics coach. And I said, Kathy, you got any tennis, Special Olympic tennis coach? She goes, no, but you are. And so 14 years ago, I became the Special Olympic tennis coach. I ended up, started with two and we ended up with 15. And along the way, we used to practice every Sunday and we grew a group of kids, but very diverse. I mean, one best shot was maybe getting the ball over the net once in a while. The other one isn't. So very diverse needs. But over the, over the time, I learned a lot about people with disabilities and different issues. The one thing I learned the most was this girl named Lauren. She came to me one day and she said, Mr. Tom, Mr. Tom, guess what? I got a job. Well, she was always at a confidence level here. Within two weeks, her confidence level was up here. And I'm thinking, okay, there's something about that job. But then realized, most kids after 23, if they disability, may just be at home the rest of their lives. And, and so from there, I took a more aggressive role in trying to do more with kids with disabilities. So we, at the hotel, we have a transition program. So kids that are from 19 to 23, they actually come to the hotel and spend four days with us and we try to get them ready for jobs. We've hired two or three of them. And then I'm treasurer of ARC, which does the same thing. We've been able to employ 35, 40, 40 people with disabilities. But that's sort of how I got started with people with disabilities. But when you start working with them, there is nothing more. When they have a passion or when they have something that, that is a strength, it's a strength because they do have areas of weakness. And you look at it and go, wow, that's pretty cool. And every one of them will have a strength and just identifying that strength to get them prepared for the long distance run for their lives. And that's what, that's what I'm doing impartially with at the hotel and with ARC.
Is there anything you'd like to add before we conclude? We're at the end of our meeting.
I think the conclusion would be is, we have a lot of, I was, and let me conclude with this. I was a big brother for children for 40 now years. In many cases of highest risk kids, started in Chicago, LA, Atlanta. And I won't spend the time on how I got there, but I see and didn't walk in their shoes, but I saw where those shoes walked. And I have to tell you, we're their only hope. Truly, we're the only hope. If we don't do this and we don't do this right, we have thousands of kids that'll wake up tomorrow and not have a job or a sense of hope. I had success stories along the way. In Atlanta, I was able to get a boy to graduate, part of the PAL program, went on to the Air Force. And he took me home in his last day. And it was not a place that I would normally feel comfortable with. But when I walked through the world that he walked through for about two or three hours, I recognized if we didn't catch him at school, we would have never caught him and been able to change his life around. Translates back into what we're doing. This is incredibly, incredibly important. If we don't do this right and with focus, doing the right things, we're going to lose kids, their whole lives are based on what we're doing. So I would conclude, this is, this is huge. So I would conclude, this is, this is huge. We need to get this right and we need to get it right now.
And tell the public where they can reach you, how they can contact you.
My, I have a website called tomdruffel.com. My phone number is, hopefully it doesn't ring off the hook, 615-456-2379. So you can reach me at my website, I have an email address, tom@tomdruffel.com. And I have, I would conclude, I have no political aspiration, you're not going to see me run for mayor or anything. I want to get in there for four years, make a tremendous difference and then let younger people carry it on. Nothing more than I want to do. That's it.
Well, Mr. Druffel, thank you very much. Frank, thank you. And to our audience at tennessean.com, you can come back for replays of past interviews and we'll be continuing these interviews almost every day for the next two weeks. Please remember to register to vote and vote on August 6th. Thank you.